We'll start today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything to add or delete from the agenda?
Mr. Chair, under planning and zoning, I would have you delete the memorandum of understanding.
Any other changes additions?
Mr. Chair, were you going to add the contract for the, what was that, for Minister?
It's in there.
It's in there?
It's Administrator.
Number four, twenty and Administrator update.
I saw it someplace on there.
But we don't have the contract down here, I don't think. Number four, under Commissioners.
Yeah.
It's all there.
I would add, I would put that on the agenda. I mean, that's how I read it when it came to us, that it was going to be added, wasn't it?
We can add the, under, or.
Under number four.
Administrator contract.
Yeah.
Anything else? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
With the change.
With the change.
I'll second that.
Motion by Erica, second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review of the minutes of June fourth meeting.
The only thing I had was, on the last, when we talked about the Forest Township zoning ordinance discussion, I wonder if we should include what, like, the conclusion of that was really that, that we would make sure that.
Support townships ordinances?
Yeah, and that, that when people applied for permits, that we would tell them to be sure to.
Check with the township.
Check with their township. Otherwise, that was all I had.
Barry, Dave?
I had nothing.
Richard, I had nothing. With that, motion approved, the minutes of June fourth?
I'll make, I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes of June eleventh special meeting.
Motion approved, minutes.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Erica. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Anything, somebody wants to?
Mr. Chair, I would like to pull for discussion four A and three A, but I just have a, I just had a clarif, just three A and four A. That'd be transit resolution two B and.
I just had four A, so.
Pardon?
I just was going to say four A, so I don't have anything additional.
With that, I would say that Steve Skook is not here, so if you have further questions or clarifications, I think Mitch was on the line.
Wait, Mr. Chair, where do we put these? Right after consent then?
That's what we did in the past.
Okay, yeah. Okay. With those two removed, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Erica, was pulling three A and four A for first discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing on all, the pair of say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that.
Go to transit. I had a question for Kevin. Just, it's just real.
Just come up and explain, we talked about this and.
Yep.
I'm referencing the purchase or the vehicle application and purchase, and then without, without knowing, I just was curious what vehicle we'd be looking at purchasing with that.
Yeah, so what happened in 2023 is we applied to replace the 2017 bus, but were denied. So this is the second attempt to replace that 2017 bus.
With the similar, with a bus similar?
Yes, yes. What, what I feel happened is with the increase in buses, the state's pool of money is the same. So, you know, they usually award about thirty-two vehicles a year, but last year was, I think, twenty-four. So the pool of money just isn't there because the bus prices increased, so not as many people are getting buses every year.
It states here that you're going to purch, with, this is approving the purchase. Are we going to review the purchase, the vehicles, when they come back for purchase? Or is this authorizing the purchase of the vehicle?
Yeah, there'll be another resolution.
So it's not actually purchased, it's, and, and, so it should probably read, that's where I was kind of.
Give it to the.
I didn't, well, authorized to go out for quotes for.
It's off state bid, so it'd be more an application.
But it'd be determining which type of bus and how big and.
Yeah, yeah.
And then once, once the grant approved, would be approved, you'd come back.
Yeah, if we get approved, then the process would be solicit quotes from vendors. And then once we get a price from a vendor, and that's approved by the state, then it would come back to the board.
That was my concern on this, this whole thing, was the, no, no information on a purchase of a vehicle that we're authorizing. And I don't, you know, we have to know, we have to make sure that it's fair, fair process, whether if it's state bid or whatever process it is. That's where I was like a little bit.
Oh, we're a little different.
So, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution two B with the vehicle replacement application and come back, and then with coming back.
Later.
If approved for.
Motion by Barry?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing on all, the pair of say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Four A, the Stadium of Building Materials Grant Application.
And I've had some thoughts about this too. I don't know, so we could only use that building for that?
Well, I don't know, I haven't actually heard that, but it's.
Well, and I.
Futures and a demo, so, no, I can't remember. Steve said there was a deadline to apply for this?
I think there is too, and I want.
Grant applications are due June twentieth.
June twentieth, yeah.
It wasn't going to be here.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so. That's all, is just to apply and see if they.
That doesn't mean we, we have to take it.
No.
Okay.
That's more or less just to apply for, see if we can get grant funding.
But it's grant funding to build a, for a building?
Yes.
Through the MPCA.
And he had to come up with a quick estimate on some costs and square footage, and he talked to a few of the local contractors to kind of give them a rough square footage price to put in the application, so.
And for those that are wondering what we're talking about, this is a, to build, to build a building, it's an application for a grant that requires a twenty-five percent local match, that would build a building that would either develop and implement a deconstruction training program that provides classroom and hands-on skills building, deconstruction, or building or acquiring, operating a reuse center to collect, store, and redistribute salvaged building materials. If a new building is constructed, it is preferred to reuse building material instead of being constructed with all new materials, so that's what the grant is for, as a.
Yeah, there are probably, how some of our present reused stuff that per se allowed through, a lot of it's kind of outside and really, that program's taken off, so.
But this is for building, construction, not just for household.
Construction material where they actually come in and tear the building down. Deconstruct.
But do we, do we know where the twenty-five percent match would come from?
And how much that match would be and.
I don't know if they have all of those figures yet, because there's also been some discussion, you know, with this building and how big should it be? Can it be used for more than just this?
And that's my concern, is what, what can it be used for? Because I'm not sure that this deconstruction thing is going to be what they think it's going to be. Because I've done some deconstruction, and you almost got to have nothing else to do to do it, and so. I have concerns about it too, but if we're just applying and we don't have to take it, then.
It's just to submit the application at this time.
Well, I'm, I have a lot of hesitancy about the building itself, because I just don't, I mean, who's, who's going to work it, who's, I mean, what's the cash flow, how much, you know, it's just, to me, it's, it's not.
There's, there's a lot unanswered, and I think Steve realized that, but he hasn't, against the timeframe to submit an application. It's like the past application we submitted for grant, we didn't, didn't get the one that Prairie Lakes supported in another county, so.
I mean, I think, as long as this is just to apply for a grant, I'm okay with it, as long as we come back with much more information, you know, before we would approve anything and understand what.
That's basically all it is, to meet the deadline and applying. That's why he called me, what I do for estimate on building costs, I'll reach out and get square foot each price and just submit, so.
I'm okay if it's just for applying, and then we come back and.
For what it has to come back with.
Yep.
Well, my concern is that the cost, the costs associated with it are not going to pay for the.
Yeah.
We're going to, the way I look at it, if we're going to lose money doing it, I don't know that we should be.
Right.
In, in, in doing it, so.
And I agree with you, Barry, we can't.
Yeah, it is, and then the way I'm tipping fee charges for that stuff to go through the other town, if we didn't reuse it something, so.
I mean, if it's, if it's not being done now, that's a reason, because it's not financially doable. So I don't care if you apply for it, but I don't know if we get it, if I can support it even.
No, we need a lot more information.
We need a lot more, yeah.
Yeah, not, for sure not the information we have, but.
No.
It's, it's nice when the whole building can be just reused. I mean, some of these beautiful homes are, decent homes are being just demolished and, and, but some of them are so big that you can't move them too.
Yeah, and it's really hard to take a house apart. They just did the reuse out here on Blight Lake.
Yeah.
They took very little, just because it's really hard to do.
The houses that you want to do that are the old houses that have historical wood, I mean, that, that.
The good ones.
Good old oak and, and stream, but people are doing that already, I think, so.
Yeah, they are. It's amazing what they can do with some of that, that old stuff, but.
Anyway.
Where's this?
I'll make a motion to go and try and get that grant.
Apply for the grant.
Yeah, but I'm, with you guys, I'm not sure that I'd support it either, but I would do need to learn a little more about.
Yeah, we need a lot more information in the meantime.
Yeah, I'll second.
Second that, just to apply for the grant.
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing on all, the pair of say aye.
Aye.
Always, Eric, thank you. That should take care of our consent agenda and our two poll items. And move on to open forum. Nate, do we have anybody signing up? Is he here?
I don't know if you can hear us. Thanks, man.
Mr. Sham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Barry, I want to thank you for standing up for the townships over zoning. You know, townships are a really a well-run unit of government, and I think all five of you know that. And I figured this out, how to, how to do this, so it's easy for zoning, and it'll work and serve the purposes of the townships. Most of you have been in Mitch's room out in Natural Resources, and if he, he wants to show you where all the forest roads are, he's got a template for that. And if he wants to know where all the pine are, he's got a template for that. Well, it's easy, just have a template, zoning can look at that. I mean, jeez, if a charcoledite like me can figure it out, I'm sure Judy, our computer wizard, will snap that like nothing. And I want to thank you for speaking up a lot better today. Richard, you're struggling, and Carrie, please, louder, louder. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Don. Just, good morning.
Good morning, Don.
Good morning, Don.
Need my address and all that.
Just your name.
We know who you are.
I just wanted to congratulate Carrie. And your new position, and to thank you, you know, when you sat in this chair back in February, and you told the board the board had to stop, it did. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. I also want to put a shout out to Sandy, that's kind of why I'm here today, tell you what an exemplary employee. She's just been a model employee, and I'm really glad she's getting some recognition today. Thirdly, we have nine people running for commissioner, and I think that's wonderful. You know, we've had, over the years, we've had so many uncontested, and it's really nice when you're running uncontested for the person, but I just think it's really good, so glad to see that. And I have a zoning question. I know some of you, most of you are probably familiar with House of Agapi. Do you know what I'm talking about? You maybe don't, you two?
Nope, I don't. Did we, did we have it, did we talk about it last?
Well, it's come up here for the last six, seven years, they've been asking to get something done. And I'm just thinking, you know, you're looking through the zoning ordinance, maybe it's time to come up with something to deal with some of these properties that are sitting in a residential area. You know, nobody's talking about countywide, but I think they deserve something out there, it's been a long time. And I talked to one of them this summer, and I said, well, you guys should come back in the board because we're going through this. His answer was, oh, what good will it do? And I've kind of felt, well, I understand where you're coming from, because it's been falling on deaf ears.
You know, are those, are the, we're having residential areas in the, in the comp plan?
Yeah.
And are there, we'll have to look at this, the, if we're going to have residential areas, then they should have different standards, I mean, they will have different standards than agricultural areas.
Yeah, and this is kind of a funny thing, because it's a half acre rock that's owned ag, you know, it's been that way forever, it's never been changed. So, but it's right next to the lake, and every, you know, so it's, I think it's obviously should be considered a residential area, but. And it's not good for the people living there. My God, it's, nobody should live like that.
I know we have had conversations about what to do with Blight Properties, because.
Yeah.
I have a couple in, in my district that I've received many phone calls from, and I, I know I've talked to Kyle about, you know, as we're moving through this, let's, let's think about that when we're looking at our zoning ordinances, so I'll make sure and bring it.
I think, I think in, in a lot of cases, with, in Blight Properties, there's, there's a lot more underlying mental health issues on, and that's.
It's a human services thing, too. The guy can't, he's not really competent. You know, I know his neighbors help him out with stuff, and they're, they're really good that way, but they're also tired. And a lot of the garbage and stuff, it used to be way worse. A lot of the outside stuff's been cleaned up, but there just isn't a way in our ordinance to handle these buildings. I think, I think we kind of need something, so hope you'll look at that. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Nobody else for open forum, so move on to reports and correspondence.
I can go first. I had human services, everything we talked about is pretty much on, was on the consent agenda. I had senior counsel last week, they, as of last week, have no nominations for outstanding senior for Becker County Fair, so they're due June thirtieth. So if you want to nominate somebody, you can go into Mahubi, and they have a form for you to fill out. I had.
That is the.
I'm not senior, so I don't know.
Make sure and recognize the senior that you know. What, we had the housing subcommittee through EDA last week, and we really just continued to talk about our internal process for housing and what that's going to look like in the coming year. Continue to look at what can we do as far as bringing housing into Becker County. And then we just had our district AMC meeting, which, one thing that I thought was, I know I visited a little bit, brought it up at our comp plan meeting, is just the cannabis stuff that we want to make sure that we stay on top of, but it was a good meeting. That was all I had. I missed the White Earth meeting yesterday, but.
I go next. So I had a, we, we had a DAC tour, actually, that, we went to Hubbard County, which is in Park Rapids, to tour their facility. Boy, wow, it's amazing. They, if you want to look at a model DAC, that's, yeah, we're, we got to get closer to that. We also wanted to go there too, because we wanted to see, they have three stores that they run through the, through the DAC. The DAC owns the buildings and the property, these stores are on, one's a thrift store downtown, and then another one downtown is Art Store. And then as you come in on seventy-one, what comes in to Park Rapids, seventy-one?
Seventy-one and thirty-four.
Seventy-one, from, from the north, there's a, it's called the, what's it called, the depot. So they sell, at the depot store, they sell larger stuff, used furniture, building materials, windows, equipment. At the thrift store, they sell, they call it barely, barely used household items, like, you know, you can, anything, you can think of clothing and all that sort of stuff. They also do something really neat at that thrift store, they, they have a baler. So they take all the clothes that they're not going to sell at their thrift store, and they put them in a baler, and then they, then they, when they get a bail, then they bring it out to the recycling center, and they work out a deal with Hubbard County to store those. And then when they get enough of them, they will sell, they will put them on a semi and sell them. And they usually sell them, she said they usually sell them to Canada. The nice thing, the interesting thing, yeah, clothes. They, so that was the question we asked, what do you do with these clothes? Well, she said most of them go to people that need clothes, because they're not, they're not like torn or, or not terrible, they just won't sell them in their store, because they want to have the better stuff in their store, so. So she said some of them might get recycled into something else, but most of it is actually people that need clothes. And they, and then they make a few, they make, I don't remember exactly what she said they made off it. The, the one thing that they do have with these stores is that thrift store's been there for twenty-five years, and the other stores have been there for twenty-two, ten, and twelve years. So they're established. The lady that runs the thrift store's been there for seventeen years, and her assistant's been there for fifteen, and all the DAC workers that are there have been there for, you know, a few years. They have a process in that, where it's working for them. The interesting thing too, also too, is the lady that, the executive director of the Park Rapids DAC or the Hubbard County, suggested that we don't build a thrift store. Which it didn't, which our executive director was kind of earth shattered a little bit, but I, I think, when we, we're going to go, and then on this Thursday, we're going to go to Ada to see the, it's not called the Norman County DAC anymore, but we're going to go there, and they also have a thrift store, and I think we'll, we'll see, we'll, we'll kind of see how a newer process works and what it takes, and it might be something in that isn't an option, which, or may be an option, we'll, we'll have to see. The nice thing about doing something like that is it allows the clients of the DAC to be workers there and to do a lot of those things, but.
Can we, wouldn't it be better though to work with the Boys and Girls Clubs and have the workers go over there and work?
That's, that's.
When you have a big, big thrift store already?
That's what we, we talked about that on the way home. That was my next thing I was going to bring up, that we did talk about that, yeah, yes. And, and the place, in Park Rapids, their, their thrift store is downtown, and that's an ideal place to have it downtown. It's ours would be, maybe not, you know, would be not maybe an ideal place, but yes, we did talk about that. All right, I also had a Lakes Country Service Club meeting. Basically, the, a couple of things, just new things, this, this July tenth, eleventh, and twelfth is the State Service Cooperative Conference. So that's in Duluth, if anybody's interested, you're all invited. There also too, in Alexandria, they are going to move their Lakes Country Academy to a new facility, and it's going, the Alex, EDA's owns the facility, so they'll be leasing it from that, and they're going to do some renovating, and they're pretty excited about how that's going to give more opportunities for their academy in, in the Alex area, so. Also courthouse. Everything's on the agenda, except we did talk about career ladders in some of our departments. They've been working with Tessa and Carrie, and to work on those career ladders to try to get those job descriptions to where they should be, so they can kind of distinguish between their different employees that do different things. Last one I had was Historical Society. The, we have, the Historical Society has decided to, the board has decided to go with the American Adventure Exhibit, and it'll be, it's the one that is like Oregon Trail, the big Oregon Trail exhibit, they're going to have it in the basement of the, of the museum, and it's going to run from this fall, September seventh, to May seventeenth. So they're going to get it for nine months, and it's going to go right, you know, with the school year, so it's going to work really, really well, because it is catered to K through twelve. And obviously, all of us know what Oregon, that know what Oregon Trail is, or it's going to be catered to us too, so, because you could actually play it.
I never could do it when I.
So, it's going to be really good, because there, it's going to fit right in with some history lessons that fifth, sixth, and seventh, and eighth graders, especially in Detroit Lakes do, so. And I'm sure other schools in Becker County.
I bet to these kids will look at that and like, this is so slow. It's, it's a very slow-moving game compared to what they have now, so.
And then one more thing about the Historical Society, Becky Mitchell and her husband Kevin have been named the grand marshals of the Water Carnival Parade, so that's kind of cool. And I think that's all I had. I had one thing to add to the AMC district meeting. We did, we did, actually, Commissioner Nelson and everybody, we talked a lot about the White Earth Land Transfer, and it was a good discussion, so. It was a lot of information that none of these other counties knew, so it was really good that we were there, that actually Commissioner Nelson was there to talk about.
Yeah, they, I think they, they stressed the need, you know, the need to sit at the table. Everyone needs to sit at the same table, and said, first meeting, probably you're not going to even discuss anything, but you have to get to know each other's people to try to get some relationships built. Because I think they, they stressed that would be the key to, you know, for the state, the state and the tribe and then counties to at least have some, some agreements on something, so. I did state that we had, we had opened, I mean, we had the NRM meeting, and we, we, I think we talked about it a little bit at our last meeting, that we didn't get any response when we were, you know, they were supposed to go work, walk the site itself, and the tribal, the agency people did not return phone calls or emails. And I don't know if they have since then, so they've not returned, so it's a little difficult to, it's a little difficult to work with the tribe when they won't, when they say they will come and meet with you, and then they don't, so, but.
We'll keep trying.
I think we need to just document that, so we say, we are trying, and I think we have to do it respectfully, not just, not just out of anger, and, you know, we have to do it. not just, not just out of anger, and, you know, we have to do it with, with some, some respect, so we get, so they know we're not just trying to, I think we have to do it with, with some intent, someone, and, and willing to compromise something. Obviously, we're not, we're not willing to compromise everything, but there's some, there's some ground, like we discussed at NRM, that we are happy to, to work with them, to avoid sites, to, to do, you know, if there's something that we have to stay away from, if there's sacred sites, or if we can look for them together. Those are things that we have no problem doing, so. And that, and, and I think that goes a long ways, so.
The problem is there's a lack of honesty there. And then, there's, you know, they don't want to talk about, they didn't want to talk about our farmers, but there's a problem there for our farmers, and then this logger that they stopped. And so, that's where, I agree with you, Barry, somehow we need to do something, but they're not, they're not trying, they're trying to stop us from doing things, they're not trying to work with us, and that, that's gonna be a problem.
Well, I, I agree totally, and I think if you read the email that was forwarded to us by Kerry, that they have now, I don't know if anyone's aware, they've eliminated their five-mile...
Buffer.
Buffer, and they've extended it to the seven-county surrounding area.
Well, that, I thought that was just to, to do research. They've eliminated the requirement for permits on existing high-powered wells for irrigators until they do further research by, I think, 2026.
Is that in the five-mile, or is that on the reservation?
Well, the...
They want seven counties.
The seven county, they're doing research on seven counties to determine the water, if there are water issues, essentially. But my understanding is, until that research is done, they've eliminated the requirement for permits on existing irrigators.
So, I'm wondering if that, is that on the reservation, then?
Within the boundaries of the reservation.
Yep, yep.
And to piggyback with that as well, with the week committee that met yesterday, and I'll push this out to you, this is very recent, I'm gonna talk, try to talk louder for you, is that better?
Okay.
There is a current resolution that was passed by the tribe, which I, I don't know if any of you have seen, but I will certainly push that out, it's several pages of intent, and it really spells out where they'd like to go with that. There was a lot of discussion yesterday at the committee with regards to the seven-county boundary, and some concerns of, you know, for an example, one of the greenhouses in Menomone that they served a cease and desist for the use of water, watering the greenhouse. So, I think some of those things are still occurring, and that's a concern to the committee as well.
Yeah, the amount of water a greenhouse would use would be almost insignificant. I mean, even if it's...
And, and really, what they were specific to that example, using, I think, a fire hydrant to probably water, and then, there wasn't a backup valve on there, and there was a separate use of fertilizer. They didn't, they didn't, well, it could have been, I think, the committee, when they were discussing that, really, it could have been more of an educational piece, but there was no crossing of the fertilizer into the, the water, so.
You need some, need some valves, check valves, to make sure you don't back it up.
Backflow protections of that.
But it didn't sound like...
Maybe it wasn't about the water, it was maybe about the...
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's, it's...
But that's just an example. Again, I, the, the bigger picture is really trying to work together, you know, for the business sakes, and, and as well as educational pieces, and rather than, you know, shutting down a small business.
Well, I, I think the, the key is not to have the extremists on trying to work together, because I don't think there's gonna be a lot of common ground with, with some of, some of the extreme water protectors, I think is what they're going with, but, anyway.
Barry, you have any more?
I do. We had the, some assessor interviews, and I think we, I think we were notified that Kerry's had a start date for the assessor.
July 1.
And then, yesterday, we had, I went to the Area Agency on Aging at Dancing Sky, and their funding has, the ARPA funds that they've been relying on quite heavily for the last few years are now in '25, going to really hit their budget. They're, they're going to be doing significant cuts to a lot of the programs, I mean, so you might hear some of that from your, so that's the re-granting, and, and so they'll probably hear some of that. I think they were, they were at about a $500,000 shortfall with those ARPA funds running out for '25. So, they're looking at changing the board structure. The board is gonna stay the same, but then some of the local boards are not gonna be, they're gonna be invited to the big board and serve as ex officier, instead of having those three meetings a year for each of the zones. And then, they're, they're an advisory board already, so they would, so they're inviting all those people that are regularly going to those meetings to come to them, and they can do Zoom or in person, so. Thought that was a fair, because it's pretty expensive to have, have staff go there and, and say the same thing as they do at the other meetings, so. They were talking about dementia, and I thought of the board instantly.
Come on up.
No, but they had, they handed out some suggestions for, you know, a file that has a lot of the records in, so if they're an aging adult to have, to have, can fill out everything, and it's, it's quite nice. And then, they have the senior...
Is this yours or isn't it?
I'm going to be using it. And then, this is for, for those that are elderly, a file of life. And this, they put that, this on your refrigerator, supposed to fill this out for the elderly, fill this out for emergency contacts, medical information, you know, medications. And the, then you fold this up and stick this on the side of your fridge, probably. So, if there's something happens to an elderly person in the house, paramedics are look, are, are looking for this. It's kind of something that's kind of standardized that people are looking for. So, be a good, good to get to those that you care about, get this put on their side of their fridge, and so they can assist those people as quickly as possible if something happens, but...
One more thing on the funding, or on the, the funding for the Aging Association, Dancing Sky. I think some of you might remember, we, I had mentioned that of the formula for how the money is distributed from the grant, from the Aging Act. And what happened is, is they put more money into 60-plus number of people and took less money from rural areas. And that was so that the cities area could have, they have more people, so they got more money, or the bigger communities. So, that also has affected our Dancing Sky, with the negative budget amount. So, that's another, besides ARPA funds disappearing, that's also gone down.
Funding change.
Yeah.
And Heather did say she wrote a letter in opposition, opposition of another funding change that would require a certain percentage, and I don't remember the percentage, that goes directly to the, the, what's it, the Center for Aging in each town, so each community would have it?
Yeah.
And she said that, you know, if that happens, we're co-doing things now, then, then we just, it's just, to me, it would be much less able to be flexible. They're doing those events, and then they're having, oh, nutrition, nutrition ones, that's, so they're having the events in coordination with nutrition, so they bring the people in, then they can eat. So, she said that would hurt those, those efforts, too, so.
And I don't think, because we talked about, at the Senior Council, there aren't a lot of people coming in to eat. A lot of them are depending on the...
Wheels.
Meals on wheels.
Delivery.
But if you wanna, if you wanna crash course on acronyms, go to this meeting.
Holy cow.
Acronyms there are just like, I'm like, I, it's crazy, all the acronyms.
The first, the first meeting I ever went to, it was like, oh, you gotta do some explaining to me, or whatever.
I think there was six staff, you know, because this is a big region, and they all had different acronyms, and I'm looking at them, DSS, but it was very good. I think that was it. Pass around some surveys that they did, if you're interested in looking at them real quick.
Anything else, Barry?
No.
I had a few, I, my monthly NACO Transportation Committee Policy Meeting, more or less just an update for the annual meeting in July in Florida, which I'm not going to attend. I got family conflicts, so. The RAC Committee, or the staff there, asked me to kind of hold a operator training at the tram for new operators, and one past operator's coming back. Did, went over quite a bit of operation with them, pre-check, daily maintenance, so things they look for hopefully prevents some issues that we've had in the past, so. And then, Mitch and I did go out and meet with dock manufacturers, and we kind of worked on specification, and we got some pricing on docks, and pretty close to what we had budgeted. I think it was a thousand bucks over, I think we said 12,000 or something. And they're working with the manufacturers, see if he'll give us a little better break on it moving forward. But basically, one side would be five feet wide, 20 feet long, walk-on ramps. Other side would be two 16-foot sections with a walk-on ramp. Attended the AMC Spring Meeting, and again, I think AMC staff does a lot of work in the legislature, behind the scenes, it never gets publicized, but they did a lot of work that probably benefited Becker County that we don't really know about, so.
I would agree.
There you go. They, they told us some things that, that were going on, and this is state, I mean, affected the whole state, but they, they get ahead of things before, before they get brought out in the public, so. And they, they said a couple of them, and we're very grateful that they steered a few of those things away right away.
Yeah, no, it's, it's great to hear that. We thought, well, they're not doing anything for this issue, but they are, so. And we wouldn't learn that unless you go to those meetings, and so...
John, one other thing for that, on those docks, you might want to look at maybe, you know, not a hand railing, but when you come off, just some...
We've already talked about that, and the docks we're gonna go with, they're very easy to add.
Yeah.
And even the manufacturer mentioned that you might want...
At least just one section, right when you get off, to hold on, just...
Okay, and Erica, we had the comp plan, little update on last Friday afternoon. And a lot of it is clarification on some of the residential areas, and I think you're gonna talk to Barry after meeting about it a little bit, and clarify some of the areas that we had questions about before.
I just, you know, I just want to, and I, and Kyle's gonna bring down individual townships, and I think when you're changing, when you're having these zone changes, I want to present to my individual township saying, you know, here's what your town, you know, what the changes are looking like, so. I think it's critical for them to have the buy-in for everything in their township, to see what changes are, if they're, you know, because right now, we were, it was suggested to go to two acre, in these yellow areas, residential lots could go down to two acres then without, without going before the county. So, it was kind of a compromise. It was one acre, and I, and I wouldn't, I didn't like that. I didn't want to accept that, and then the board kind of compromised, at least go down to two acres, so there's some difference in those residential areas, and there's a benefit then to do that. So, but I think it's imperative when there's a change, some townships there, it's all ag, you know, some townships, it's ag, and, you know, they're, they're not gonna have a big, they're not gonna be any change, but the, the metro ones will, and the high-density areas will change, so.
And there's been a little input from one of the focus groups, and I think she set a meeting in July with them.
Yep, I think so.
So, she is taking their information that they supplied and looking at it. A lot of it I looked at, it was pretty outdated, it was back in the 90s when the studies were done, but at least we'll take a look at it.
I did ask Kyle, too, and he said he'd get it to us, but we, they were gonna get back, get those back to us right away, the, with the, remember they had in, they have updated information, and we had to hand back all the...
I don't remember.
Remember that the numbers were, then we were changed, so. We handed them back in, and they, I thought they were going to get them back to us in a timely manner, and having not, I've seen those.
The other thing that we, we talked briefly about, and they're gonna get us some numbers, is, you know, the RFP that we put out was just to update our zoning, but as we're looking at our, having redone our land use, we may need to look, it may cost more to, to look at the zoning ordinance, to make it...
Redo some of the ordinance or correspondence.
Well, the ordinance were included in that.
It was just an update in the RFP.
I think it was clear that we were looking at up ordinances, that they put that in their original timeline. Those ordinances would be in effect, so I don't think there, there is any need to revisit financially. They, they committed to that right away.
Well, it's out of the discussion, probably a full board with them.
Yeah.
So, okay. And then, Dave and I were back in negotiations quite a bit yesterday again, so hopefully we're moving forward on some of that, so. Richard?
I just had Human Services with Erica, and I don't have anything on that.
Yep.
Anything else on reports, correspondence? Moving on, any appointments? I don't know, Dave's got one coming up, we're a board of adjustments, we had a resignation there.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to County Administrator Contract, Kerry Smith, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions concerned?
I, I had a, I do not support the portion where it says you, the, I, I support state-affiliated organizations that do your automatic, I mean, we expect that, but any, any NACO or any national, I think, should come back to board to be reaffirmed, because any out-of-state travel is, is required to have board approval. So, I don't have, obviously, the state ones I'm very supportive of, but if you, if we go higher than that, I think it should come back to board.
Yeah, be a member of NACO, but if you, anything beyond that, like...
If you're attending out-of-state, if you're, if you're a board member, or, or, you know, putting a lot of time in and, and traveling, I think that needs to come back to board.
Right, similar what you approved for myself, so.
But...
Just make that a little correction.
But that's, that was one of the things that I, that I saw, and I, and I, I think this is a very, I, I will respect the wishes of the, the committee and the negotiator, I'm, I'm sure you guys...
Going back and forth a little bit.
So, I mean, I appreciate that, and support your decision. But I did, I do, I do think it's important that any out-of-state travel, and, and, because I don't, I, I don't want, I don't want our administrator to be in Washington full-time, or, you know, I just...
I don't want to go there.
Good, good. I want, I want our, I want it to be around here, so.
I think sort of changes, it's an notation that any out-of-state travel...
Any out-of-state appointment, maybe, or, and travel needs to be bored, back to the board, is fine.
Understood.
Okay.
Was that the motion to approve the contract with the new administrator?
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative contract with a noted change.
I'll second.
My Erica, second by Dave. Further discussion?
Congratulations, Gary.
Thank you.
Hearing all of Barry, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Then we have employee recognition, Sandy Gunnison, 33 years of service.
Come up here.
Come on up.
He'll come down. He'll come to you.
Get a picture of the whole board and I'll present this to her.
You would stand, I better stand over here.
I think just the comments, Sandy has done a wonderful job in that position, educating, a lot of PR work, spending a lot additional time, so you're gonna be missed in that position. position.
Thank you, Sandy.
Good luck on your retirement or whatever else you're going to do.
I mean, what a, what a great face for Becker County is Sandy. I mean, you've done such a wonderful job. And I have never seen you mad or upset. And I, you just, you're just the model face for Becker County. If we could model the personality that you bring to the people in Becker County, I would just love everyone to be as good employee and passionate about their role in our government. So thank you.
Yeah. And I just ditto to what everybody else has said. If you don't, very often anymore, you don't see employees stay at an agency for 34 years. So we have been very lucky to have had you for the last 34 years. So thank you.
Yeah. And I just want to say, Erica and I, before we, I think after we got elected, before we started, we went out and visited. And it was amazing to see what you guys do out there. It's unbelievable. So and then you're, and what was really impressed by me even more so is the passion that you had for what you were doing. You really enjoyed it. You really, the way you talked to us and told us what you do and how you do it. And it was awesome. So thank you for doing all that.
Yeah. I think it is obvious Sandy loved her job and took it very seriously. And that's not, that's not everywhere anymore. So thanks, Sandy.
Moving on, the county administrator report.
All right. Just a couple of updates. Yesterday here in the courthouse, we did have a powder, powder, let me try that again, a power outage. They hit a line out here. So our, everything we've talked about with no generator here in the old part of the courthouse came true for about 40 minutes. They did restore power. So I, that was good. It was at the end of the day as well. So everything shut down. Just a couple of additional comments on the week committee that met yesterday. I very referenced that they did, there is a resolution that I will push out to the board, but just next steps that they did discuss that when the other counties were here, there's going to be some coordination and you'll see that in the very near future. Online, we also had Todd Hill. He was, he was online and gave updates on anything that he could offer as far as suggestions. There will be some coordination and some suggestions by the committee as well to try to coordinate a meeting between the interested parties and the governor's office. So that will be potentially a next step. But there's interest in that committee and continuing their work. And I think as Commissioner Verberk had indicated, I think lots more work can be done and lots more coordination. But it's definitely a work in progress. So that is all. You referenced the resignation of Dan Josephson. So that will be needing to, for a new appointment.
Carrie, I just had a question on, you know, the tribe mentioned this new, this new committee that they're trying to organize with, I mean, they mentioned the DNR, the Red River retention, the, we should probably try to get on that. If there is that large of a stakeholders' meeting, I think we need to be at that table too.
I would agree. And we talked about, you know, it's already been referenced that they haven't responded to our requests. And as we all know, they do do some more informal meetings on Mondays and then their more formal board on Friday. So we've had some discussion and I, my intent is to reach out and see if we can have, be a part, whomever from our group here in Becker County to meet with tribal officials on their more informal on Monday. I think that that would be a good starting point for us. So do you have something further?
No, I don't know. I don't know that those, you know, they have weekly informal meetings Monday and I think one board meeting on Friday once a month. But I just, unless, I think, I think like they suggested AMC, I think we need some informal, I mean, face-to-face informal meetings just to get to know the people, I mean, individually. So I would support the department heads are, you know, to go and say, you know, where are we going with this? I mean, as far as individual sales, I mean, and how can we avoid these conflicts in the future? But anyway, I think we have to, I think we need, have some work to do to get to that point too.
In addition, there was, we had talked about this before, we had received correspondence from SHIP-O on that particular logging site by Strawberry Lake. I did spend some time last week with a couple of staff members and our county attorney drafting a response letter back. We're really just looking again for some direction, who makes what decision. And we, in the particular draft letter that we wrote, it really is asking questions of, we're just not getting clear answers. And really, the interpretation of the statute that they are citing is questionable by our county attorney. So there is a draft letter that.
I would question on, do they have authority to require counties, cities, individuals to do investigations of this sort?
Right. Especially when there's no federal funding.
Well, yes, that usually there's a, that's why you do it. It's because there's federal or state funding that require this. I don't, again, I've said this before, I don't think that they have the authority to require that. Now, we certainly will want to work with TIPA if we have, if there's a concern. But I don't know why we would spend money to an outside vendor that's not, I mean, the tribal is going to do their own anyway. Why would we spend money on an outside vendor to do this when the tribal want to do it themselves if there is a concern? So I don't, I don't believe the state has authority. State can't tell me I have to do an archaeological study on ground that I move. They have no authority.
We couldn't get that answer either in that meeting that day. And we asked it and nobody could tell us if we had to do it or not. So.
And it had only been done 10 times in the last 10 years.
I feel the same.
And then to what extent, if they are requiring it, is it just the area where you're going to be loading? I mean, we're not going out in the woods and digging holes. We're cutting trees.
Well, and to your, to your point, those are exactly the questions, because everything that we are getting from SHIP-O is indicating recommended. Nothing's required. And that's exactly the point of responding back. So for this particular tract of land where the logging was occurring by Strawberry Lake, as you know, SHIP-O had sent us a letter saying they recommend a level-one archaeological study. We were also told that they would accept the counterpart to the DNR archaeological study, desktop, if you will, you know, telling us if there's potential for any artifacts there. The DNR had written an email indicating that there might be, but there's nothing that is documented. But when that was sent to SHIP-O, as our understanding, it was our understanding that they would accept that. They did not accept that. And then they followed up again with a letter saying they're back to recommending that level-one archaeological study. And again, it's a recommendation. So we are responding to that again.
Yeah. You know, and I look at it, you know, and I love history. But I look at it, if you go, if there's no burial mounds, if, I mean, if there's nothing of that nature, there's campsites for, from, I mean, you can't hardly go out in many areas, especially by lakes, and not find a campsite of some sort from some time era, you know. I just don't see the value of hiring. And I, again, I love history and I love artifacts, but I just, to hire full-time people to go out and to try to, I just don't, I don't, I don't believe the significance is worth the cost. That's my opinion.
I think they should be looking for them. They told us that day where they, where to find them, near maple trees and lakes. And if this is a big concern for them, I would think that they would be looking at all of those sites on this tax-forfeited land already, if they're really concerned about it. Or is it just, you know, another way to?
I think it's, I think it's genuine. I mean, I think it's a genuine concern for them. But at the end of the day, I just question the value of it myself.
I don't think they're being genuine. I think they just are trying to stir up trouble. But that's what it looks like to me. But.
All right. The next item that I have in your packet, this has been a long process to appoint a coroner. There was a lot of questions with regards to insurance coverage for this position and whether or not it was needed in the duties that she would be performing. The last word that we got was that an attorney opinion was that insurance was not needed. So I just utilized the prior contract. The rate is per-rated for this year and the suggestion by the sheriff that her start date be August 1st to fulfill the remaining term of the prior coroner. So I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Strand to this position.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2H.
Motion, my Dave, second.
Second.
My Barry, further discussion? Hearing on all the favors, Resolution 2H, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Carry it.
Last item that I have for consideration is the resolution, again, cleaning up the language. Hopefully I got it correct this time, for the language with regards to the implementation of the comp and salary study and the implementation thereof. It was suggested by, I believe it was Commissioner Jepson, to utilize the language out of one of the contracts that was settled to remain consistent. So I haven't heard any feedback from any of you that you wanted any modifications. I would ask for that this would amend our prior, just again, with the intent to clarify the language and what the intent of the board was.
I have a motion for Resolution 2K.
Or 2G. 2G. To amend 2K.
Wrong one.
I'll make a motion to approve 2G.
Motion, my Dave, second.
Second.
My Barry, further discussion? Hearing on all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Carry it.
And that's all I have.
I thought we had another resignation, that we had to, didn't our HR person resign?
Well, that's a great point, Commissioner. If you would like me to do a formal resignation out of the other position, I sure could do that.
Well, I'm just thinking about, I think we should authorize you to advertise the position.
Yes. And it might be, you're absolutely right. It may be a cleaner way to do that. And I can certainly write, send that to the board.
I think we acknowledge the authorization to start the process to put out, to hire.
Yep. I agree.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I mean, I'd like to look at other solutions, but I think we need a HR, you know, you need.
That would be helpful.
You need the supervisors.
Just take a break. Anyone want a short break?
Yeah.
Dave does.
Dave does.
We're a few minutes ahead. So I think. Thank you.